Council Candidates Forum presented by Pacifica Community Television or Pacific Coast Television and the Pacifica Tribune. A great combination, actually, if you think about it. We've been doing our thing at PCT for almost 40 years. It'll be 40 years next year. And the Pacifica Tribune, well, you combine that, that's 100 years of covering this beautiful part of the world. I'm Dennis Willis. And why me? Why the guy who talks about movies and plays 10 great songs from one great year? What do I have to do with any of this? Nothing politically. But I live here. I've lived here my whole life. I love Pacifica and I care about it. And I care about where it's going, as do all of you who are here today and everybody who's watching online and on TV. So, thank you very much for joining us tonight. And thank you very much for watching us and supporting PCT. I'm the President of the Board of Directors of Pacific Coast TV. And our mission as such, first of all, we're the longest-running media center of its type, 39 years in the country. And as such, we invite folks like yourself to come down and produce TV and to pretty much cover what's happening in Pacifica and up and down the coast now. That's what we do. And just also worth pointing out, PCT is not endorsing any candidate or any campaign. What we want you to do is make your own decision. And that's how we position ourselves. And hopefully, that's the spirit in which we're meeting tonight. We are going to meet four candidates who are vying for a seat on the City Council. And basically, it's a very simple format. We have four candidates and we have four questions. And to keep things absolutely fair, we've even lined them up in alphabetical order, just so nobody thinks. The first candidate will answer the first question, the second the second question, the third the third, and on. And I'd like to introduce you to our candidates right now. Bridgette Duffy, Deirdre Martin, Mary Ann Nyheart, and Sue Vaterlos. Thank you very much for coming. I know it kind of was a short notice thing, but everybody is ready to rock and roll. Is everybody ready? Okay. We are going to start. Here are the rules, basically. We're going to have three minutes per question. I've got the counter right here. I'll be gently reminding at the 32nd point. And if you're on a roll, I might just do this, just to get your attention. But that's how we're going to go. So, three minutes, and then we'll move on to the next candidate. And that's about it. So, we're going to start with question number one. This is for Bridgette. Please introduce yourself. Tell us your background and tell us why you are running.
Hi. Thank you for having us, PCT, which is Pacifica Coast TV. Is that right?
Something like that.
I was wrong. I thought it was community. And thank you for the, to the Tribune for having us too. And for everybody that came. It's important to take your vote seriously. And I'm glad that anybody who's watching is also doing that. Who am I? My name is Bridgette Duffy. My family has lived in Pacifica for nearly 40 years. I, as a young woman, when I started my family, had to move away to buy a home because we knew we couldn't buy a home in the Bay Area at the time. That was a long time ago. So, I am back living in Pacifica and I am absolutely in love with Pacifica. Talk about, the reason why I am running is because I care about Pacifica. And I think we all do. And, you know, the truth is, is... I'm trying to blank. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm a homemaker. Yes, I'll tell you about that. Why am I running? I'm running as a grassroots candidate. I'm the newest on a list of new California Greens. And you can find that at ca.green.ns.org. I'm also listed with the League of Women Voters. There's a lot more information that needs to go on about that. But basically, I'm a homemaker. You say, "Well, how does that prepare you for being on the City Council?" But I say, "If that doesn't prepare me for doing something that nobody else wants and getting very little pay to do it, I don't know what does." But that's just a little joke I like to make. Because I know our councilmen work very hard. And it's not really something that you would do if you were really going for the bucks. But it is a worthy job and I think I can do it. I've been attending council meetings for a long time. I'm running grassroots campaign. I don't have any funding from any major source whatsoever, other than, you know, my own bank account, which is not very big at all. So, you won't see very many signs and you won't see very many mailers. But I have a message. And the message is that I believe that the City Council is dominated right now by three votes that are...
32nd.
People who are backed by the National Association of Realtors. And it's probably why we haven't seen anything done about the astronomical rent increases and evictions that we've seen lately. And that's pretty much why I'm running.
Thank you very much. Deirdre Martin?
Thanks, everyone, for coming. Thank you to the PCT and the Tribune for hosting. Thanks to the other candidates for being here and the audience members. I'm sure you want to know why I want to run for City Council. I grew up just a little bit outside the city of Philadelphia. And I grew up in the Parks and Rec Department. Back then, the only thing it cost to be a camper was a bag of cookies and a can of juice. So, it was the idea of community taking care of community. And fast forward, a number of years later, I landed in Pacifica. And seeking a little peace, I land with the Pacifica Beach Coalition. I've been working with them for about eight years. And I've been two years Vice President, Site Captain currently for the last six years at Sharp Park Monthly Cleanups. I also run the Waste Collection for Earth Day and Coastal Cleanup Day. And I help plan the EcoFest every year. I also was a natural fit for a Commissioner's Spot with the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. I'm currently serving my fifth year as a Commissioner. And I do work with the Pacifica Climate Committee. So, you can see that I'm surrounded by a lot of people with a lot of passion for our natural environment. And I realized that it wasn't just our natural environment, it is our human environment. And I realized this in 2014, when my husband and I lost our daughter at birth. And we were so surrounded by our community. You would have never known that both of our families live far. We were lifted up. We had meals at our door. We had Memorial Beach Cleanups, people picking us up, taking us out of the house. And we knew we were in the right place. And that's why I know I'm in the right place. When I go to Fair Rents for Pacifica Meetings and I see this idea of community taking care of community. And I believe that we are one entity with our government. It's our responsibility to be an active member of our government, show up to Sea Level Rise Forums and plan with City Council and help put policy in place. I also grassroots organizations like Pacificans or Highway One Alternatives. We have a traffic problem. Let's come up with some alternatives. So, it's because of this passion that I want to put my passion to work for you as a City Council person. Ultimately, I want my 11-month-old daughter, Nova, to grow up in a Pacifica that I feel like I'm in right now, a place where her voice counts and her actions make a difference. Our campaign, I say it's "our" campaign because this is my community, our community. I wouldn't do this if it weren't for the people that are surrounding me, have helped raise a lot of money. And we've run a really good campaign. I want to thank my endorsements, the Sierra Club, the San Mateo County Democrats. I've received endorsements from Local 2, Local 5, Local 217, Fair Rents for Pacifica, Pacifica Climate Committee. Is that 30?
Actually, about 15, sorry.
Thank you. I think I'll end it there. I'll follow up later. I hope you like what you hear.
Sorry, that was my fault. Thank you, Deirdre. Mary Ann?
Well, thank you. And thank you to the other candidates for being here and certainly to the Tribune and PCT. Because both of those are great community organizations. So, I'm the seated council member, obviously, the incumbent. And I ran many years ago. And it's interesting that it was largely for many of the reasons you all talk about. We're sitting in a building that, and on a lot, that is vacant and able to be developed largely because of a community organization. Several of us got together and started talking about what we could do with wastewater and how we could keep, what we were having was overflows every winter. And this plant was inundated when it first opened in 1972. And as a result, we have a tertiary treatment plant, not on exactly the site we wanted, but in a place that we were able to compromise on as a community. Definitely, it has its shortfalls, but in the long run, we have recycled water and sludge that I've put my hands in for a Footprints episode on PCT. So, I can tell you that it is such a benefit to our community. And that's what grassroots and caring about your community can do. I also know that Pacifica has its financial challenges. And as a city with financial challenges, we really have to rely on our partners. And our county, our region, our state, and our federal government are the sources of those partners. And when I first ran for office, I looked around at cities who had done well in terms of grant funding and projects that they were working on. And I saw South San Francisco. And I looked at that and I said, "That's what we need. We need to be that engaged in all of those areas." So, I've been elected the City and County Association Government's Chair for two and a half years. A, I've been the County Representative to the Association of Bay Area Governments on regional issues. And I'm running because we need to continue those partnerships. I'm a nurse, a nurse practitioner particularly. I actually am...
32nd.
Working in management for the federal government. But I got to tell you, my biggest concerns about this community is really about continuing those relationships. And I've asked for one endorsement and one endorsement only. And that's the San Mateo County Labor Council. Electeds like Jackie Speer and others came along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Sue Vaterlos?
Hi. My name is Sue Vaterlos and I will thank everyone also for being here and putting this on. I've been a resident of Pacifica for 37 years. For the past 25 years, I've devoted my time to various organizations, about 11 committees in Pacifica itself amongst the, also, school committees, the School Bond Committee. On Planning Commission, we were very reasonable. That was my last committee I served on. We allowed some projects to go forward and not others. I am a very reasonable person. Prior to that, I was on the Economic Development Committee. We started the pop-up art gallery, which was a great thing. We were trying to do movie nights. So, we were about advancing economic development in Pacifica. Prior to that, I was on financing city services, where we went over every single detail, including the paper, that each department spent money on, so that we could try to make the budget more clear. I was also on General Plan Steering Committee, the Site Facilities Committee, which is the first one I started on. And the Bond Review Committee at the school district was really interesting. We needed to make sure that we watched every penny that was spent and that all of the projects got done within the allotted time. And they did, and they came in at budget. I've also served on many, many school committees as parent-teacher organizations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, to name. And it could go on and on. I do believe in the common sense solutions for Pacifica. We all have strong opinions about Pacifica. And I believe that all of us can work together. I agree, we're all passionate about Pacifica. We love living here and we love Pacifica. And we want it to be the perfect place for everyone to live. I think we can achieve a good outcome together. I work in Rockaway Beach. I live in the North End of Pacifica. I am available and I am willing to talk to people and to listen to what people have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the second question. And in this case, we are going to start with Deirdre Martin. Our second question, please tell us what you feel is the most important issue facing Pacifica? And what, if elected, you intend to do about it?
I think the most important issue facing Pacifica and this, right now, in our current climate, is our rent protection issue. I said previously that going to these meetings, the first meeting that I went to for Fair Rents for Pacificans, is a group of Pacificans, in case you don't know, that have mobilized around the idea of keeping Pacificans in Pacifica who want to stay in Pacifica. I was so shocked because the majority of the people who attended these meetings were not renters. They were homeowners. And they weren't homeowners who were concerned about rent control affecting their single-family homes. They were concerned citizens, people who want to keep Pacifica what Pacifica is. And people choose to buy houses, people choose to rent. And that is what makes Pacifica Pacifica. I can tell you, at my beach cleanups, there are a lot of renters. So, there are also a lot of homeowners. If those renters go away, who cleans the beaches? Who comes to our EcoFest and our Earth Day and our Coastal Cleanup Day? Who holds Memorial Beach Cleanups? And some folks may argue that the folks who can't afford to be in Pacifica just can't afford to live here, then. What we're dealing with is people who have been in Pacifica for a long time and want to stay in Pacifica. I believe that property owners have their own rights. We own properties. We are landlords. But you cannot do it when we're in the middle of a housing crisis. It's not what Pacifica is about. And as a City Council person, I plan on putting policy in place to protect Pacificans from the rising cost of rent. If you haven't read the two-page proposal that Fair Rent folks put forth, please do yourself a favor, get educated. It's a very simple read. And I think that's a good starting point.
Thank you very much. Mary Ann Nyheart?
Well, absolutely. It's amazing, we're off to a great start here, agreeing on lots of things. I happen to think that the housing crisis is one of the most important things facing us in the Bay Area in general right now. And I am thinking particularly from multiple levels. One is the fact that it isn't even remotely in the name of green. And the reason is, I have environmental services workers who are coming to the hospital and are actually living in their cars during the week and commuting from the Central Valley. We have people that are living in motorhomes. And you see more and more cars parked along with people living in them. It is becoming absolutely unsustainable. As a member of the Association of Bay Area Governments, this is something that we have begun looking at in a multifaceted way. There's not going to be one answer. And often, we try to pit one answer. They sound good, they are quick fixes, they are simple. But the truth is, right now, we can fix rents and still not have places for our grocer, our person who is doing your dry cleaning, who is working, and our schools. We need places for our teachers. We need places where we can live and work in our community. And those are the things that are choices that everyone has made. And we've begun to talk about really creative ways of looking at work. When you add literally thousands of jobs, like Facebook did, and only 700 housing units, you create and add to the crisis. And we can go down the peninsula and look in that. It's wonderful to have great economics in San Mateo County and be considered one of the wealthiest counties in the country. But we have to provide for the folks that live here. And there is a number of ways to sort of look at that, from the code changes about how we approach housing and multifamily units and the parking issues and looking at all of those complexities together. You can't just pick one thing and pull it out. And I'm never going to just trade off, because one of the things about government is making a decision that hurts some people and helps others. And you have to always balance that for the whole entire community. So, that's something that I am constantly going to be working on. And I've actually been involved in the committee for that with the Association of Bay Area Governments and also at the county level.
Thank you very much. I'll restate the question for the folks who are watching and might have just joined us. Please tell us what you feel is the most important issue facing Pacifica and what, if elected, you intend to do about it? Next up is Sue Vaterlos?
I think we have many issues right now. My main issue is shoreline protection. If we don't protect our shoreline, these houses, the rent control, if the houses are gone, we won't have houses to rent. We won't have businesses, schools, and infrastructure. We need to protect our coast, our houses. Also, and if I were on council, I would continue to talk to the elected officials about getting more and more grant money to save our coast. And I believe they are on board and ready to give us that grant funding. And we need to go forward with that. Also, I think the library is a big issue right now. We have Measure N on the ballot. It would provide a 21st century library. We currently have two very small libraries that are inefficient, they're rundown, they have split the times between the two. And we need a new library where we can have events, where people can actually gather. We don't have gathering spots in Pacifica. It's a sense of community when you have a library. The library provides for so many different people, people with no computers, people who read, people studying, children. I took my kids to the library. And right now, the library cannot support even the children's programs because they are so small. I definitely support the measure and I would hope that a lot of people will vote yes on N. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Bridgette Duffy, please tell us what you feel is the most important issue facing Pacifica and what, if elected, you would do about it?
I just want to say one thing about the library. Not many people know that voting yes on the library means that we're closing two of our current neighborhood libraries. One, which is in Lindemar and has a huge senior population that it depends on that library. So, I'm voting no on the library. And I think the most important issue facing our city and our county, actually, is the rent issue. And it has affected the economy something horrible. I've talked to local merchants who've lost 50% of their customer base. It's decimated our working-class voter base. I mean, it is disrupting the community here in a major, major way. And I have been trying to get the attention of the City Council and many people have for a couple of years now. And we have been met with an absolute wall. No talk would be allowed even to be discussed about stabilizing our housing market, which is not a random flighty whim of the public. This is a bona fide emergency. We have an emergency on our hands. People are leaving our city, our town, our county, having to move three hours away. People are living in their cars, who work sometimes two jobs. To be giving over 60 to 70, sometimes 80%, of your pay to a landlord absolutely kills all the business in this town. So, it's something that needs to be dealt with. I believe it is not being dealt with because we have a majority council who is all backed by the National Association of Realtors and the San Mateo County Association of Realtors. And for some reason, I'm not even really sure why, the Realtors see it as, I mean, I'd have to get more information from the Realty community, which I'm more than happy to listen to. But they see it as a threat, rent stabilization as a threat, I suppose, to their incomes. I don't really understand because with a community that is in that much flux...
32nd.
We're not going to have the same economic prosperity that we're looking for unless we're planning on just turning the whole thing over into a bed-and-breakfast community, which, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if that was the idea. That's why it's important to, if we want to maintain the Pacifica that we know, the small town that we love, we have to get people who are not backed by the Realty Association on our council.
Thank you. We're moving on to the next question. This for Mary Ann Nyheart, going first. Many locals see preservation of natural resources as a top priority, while others feel economic development is most important at this time. How would you balance the interests of economic growth with our environmental interests? And please give specific answers.
Absolutely. And I'm going to use my second problem as an example. But first, I want to say that I am incredibly proud of the work that we've done in this community and have always been supportive of the Land Trust and our efforts at preserving open space. Over 50% of our community is right now dedicated open space and will not be built upon, no matter what happens in this election or any other election. On the other hand, I will say that we can balance things really effectively when we work together. And we recently had a study session on sea level rise and the shoreline, in which many of the groups that were talking actually begin to work together. And our community always does better when we're working on the same page together. So, I see, long-term, significant problems for us in terms of coastal erosion and shoreline stabilization. And one of the small things that we have to consider is that we could, right now, leverage our partnerships to become an exemplar for other cities in terms of how we manage the best science, the best approaches, the best actual preservation of beaches, at the same time that we protect our infrastructure and our community and our economics. When you see Pacifica, year after year, on the news for our erosion, our affordable housing, frankly, falling into the ocean, you know that that's not the image we want to project. So, that affects the economics. Bringing in some new technologies, some new abilities, and doing a full coastal plan, which we've received a grant for already from the Coastal Commission, to do the planning from the top of the city to the bottom, and then looking at individual sites, yes, I've got confirmation from Kevin Mullen and from his office, from Jerry Hill, from Jackie Speer, they're all on board to support, as well as Don Horstley. A unified effort at making this community really have that advantage of protecting both our natural beauties as well as our infrastructure and our citizens in the community.
Thank you very much. Many locals see preservation of natural resources as a top priority. Many others feel economic development is most important at this time. How would you balance the two?
I think we can easily have both. Palmetto as Main Street can be walkable shops. Here, in this location, a new hotel, a restaurant. I can see all of us sitting up on that rooftop deck, having a glass of water at night, looking at the ocean. And I think we can have both. We have open space and I'd like to keep our open space. I love the beach, just like everybody else does. We could revitalize the centers that we have and make sure that we have shops that people want to go to and that our shops are full. We can improve many of the centers here and expand upon them. I think that Eureka Square is getting better, it's filling up. Lindemar is getting better. But we need to have all of our stores full. Fairmont has just revitalized a little bit by adding the Safeway, and that's good. We need economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridgette Duffy, same question. How would you balance the interests of economic growth with our environmental interests?
I actually think that if we make the planet and people our priority over profit, we will find prosperity. That's a bunch of Ps there, but I do think that the way to prosperity is actually to cultivate our open spaces. There's a lot of talk about the Palmetto Avenue area. And we're in it right now, we're sitting there. And I think this is the coolest neighborhood. And I think this is the coolest building. And I think that with a little... And I think that with a little bit of imagination, we could make this Lake Valencia Street. Valencia Street didn't do any development. It just became a really great place to be. We can make that happen without building or tearing down anything in this neighborhood. The reason why there's such a big push for all this big development, hotels, libraries, street scapes, is because of the real estate and development community. They want to, they have big plans. I get, you have big plans, but things have changed. There's a rising sea out there, and the rising sea is an unknown factor. We don't really know what's going to happen. Moffett &amp; Nickel is a consulting firm that the city has paid almost $80,000 to consult on sea level rise. They're located in Walnut Creek. I don't think they should be considered experts. I don't know what sea level rise they're experiencing there. But the other thing is, is when you pay somebody $80,000 and they say, "Go ahead and build here. It's no problem," can that really be relied on? I mean, there are a lot of other scientists. The City of Pacifica even has a climate action plan, and it does not include dumping $180 million worth of development in this area. That's a completely different story. You want to protect the area? Fine. Don't protect it and then build, you know, millions of dollars' worth of infrastructure right on the other side of a wall that we have no idea whether it's going to work or not because it's an unknown factor. The future that we're looking into is all a bunch of unknowns. The climate is changing.
Thirty seconds.
The climate is changing. We know that for sure, and we are a coastal city. So we do know we're in for some changes. We should rethink some of our ideas, is all I'm saying. Instead of building on bad ideas, let's look for new ideas and build on them.
Thank you very much. Deidre Martin, you're up. How would you balance the interests of economic growth with our environmental interests?
Well, I think a lot of folks see this as a black-and-white issue, the environment versus growth. And I like the word balance, and balance is key. I think we do a really good job, like Councilmember Nyheart said, of maintaining our existing open space, and it's why I wanted to live here. And how do we capitalize on that, right? That's kind of what this question really means to me. How do we continue with that philosophy of our environment as our economy? I think we do a good job, but I think we can do better. If you didn't know, the Park Speeches and Recommission ran a little quiz that you hike out on the trail. How do we get people out of their phones and onto our trails? Well, you combine the two, right? And so that's kind of something along the lines of what we might want to think about doing. You know, you stop at the pier, and then you follow along, and where do you end up? Over here at the end of Maury Point? And it's kind of a little quiz that you follow along. That's a really good idea. How do we build apps around that? I know Vicky Flores with the Chamber of Commerce came from Silicon Valley and talked about kind of bringing IT to Pacifica. So let's talk about some of that kind of integration. How about our wonderful economic development manager who came in with a bang and her wonderful idea that didn't go over too well to begin with, but I think with some planning, we can get it off the ground, the off-the-grid at the beach. Probably wrong spot, wrong location, too short notice, but let's think about stuff like that. How do we get people to the beaches? We can do some off-the-grid, and then they walk along Palmetto, right? We use our existing resources, right? Something that was really creative, I thought, at the Fog Fest was that the Miss Pacifica statue traveled to our Little Brown church, get people in to see our history. We've got Sanchez Adobe. This is all our existing infrastructure, all our existing resources. Sanchez Art Center. What about an ocean discovery site? That's a rumor that's been buzzing for a while. This is a great place for something like that. How about our whales? Whale Town? Did you see the turnout for Whale Town? We didn't even have enough. We had side rooms that were having kind of breakout sessions. It was amazing. How do we capitalize on things like that? That's a really good balance, I think.
Thirty seconds.
We don't have to do anything. All we have to do is just get people to the beach. So let's make sure that we have beaches. Did you know that it's Sharktober? Yes, it's Sharktober. And there's an event coming up with Pacifica Beach Coalition and the libraries and the shark stewards. Get informed. Get out there. We're doing it. We're doing it well. Let's keep on doing it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to have a little fun now for those who want to see a spirited debate. Our final question is, and this, Sue, you'll lead off our answers here, no pressure. In light of the other answers you've heard, tell us what approach you disagree with and why your approach to handling our city's problems is superior to that of the other candidates.
Well, I've heard a couple of things I didn't agree with. Realtors aren't here to fully develop Pacifica. Realtors don't develop. Developers develop. We sell houses to people. We put people in rentals, and we make people happy every day. So I do disagree with that. I think we can have a meeting of everybody, the environmentals, the Realtors. I'm an environmentalist, so I believe in trees. I believe in saving what we have, and I think I could get along with everyone else on that fact, too. I really love being here, as do all of us, and I want to continue.
Thank you. Thank you. Bridget Duffy, in light of the other answers you've heard, tell us what approach you disagree with and why your approach to handling the city's problems would be different.
Well, I suppose, since there hasn't been too much, I just have to say that, I just have to say, for one thing, that I respect everybody here. I like and respect everybody in Pacifica. I have really no personal gripe with anybody. I see everybody as doing the best they can, as am I. And I would like to see a rent control, a rent ordinance go through. I think the people of Pacifica really need more housing security. It's basically been an eviction of working-class people, which I am in that class. And I am facing having to leave the Bay Area myself, and it's a serious problem. And I look at it like, I told this story, there used to be sea otters right there, a couple of hundred yards out, in great big floating seaweed beds. And in the 1800s, the otters were hunted to near extinction. They were apex predators, so it wound up having this huge chain reaction in our ocean, which has yet to repair itself. And to me, not valuing the people that live here, the people that rent here, the people that work here, not having the space or the time in your heart, with whatever capacity you have, especially as a city council, to allow this to continue. Year after year, month after month, it's November. Last November I was in here, a friend of mine was evicted from his place. He had to give up his business because his business was based in his house. I was asking the city council to put a temporary moratorium on eviction, get people through the winter. The fact that this government has done absolutely nothing is really actually shameful. And the lawmakers in our city, county, state, and even country, because this is happening everywhere, need to help us. And that is why I'd like to become a lawmaker, because if I do become a lawmaker, I am going to pass laws that protect people, stabilize the housing, protect our nature...
Thirty seconds.
...absolutely, and save our neighborhood libraries.
Thank you very much. Deidre Martin, you're up next. Tell us what approach you disagree with and why your approach to handling the city's problems would be superior to the other candidates.
Superior is such a distinctive word. I don't necessarily believe that I'm superior in any way, but I do disagree, and it's the whole rent situation, with a couple of the other, I think, a couple of the other candidates. And why do I think that my position is better for this community? It's because I believe that my position puts people first. And I read a really neat excerpt from a book called Business as Unusual: Profit with Principles by a woman named Anna Roddick. And she says, "The business of business should not be about money. It should be about responsibility. It should be about public good, not private greed." And I'm not saying that all property owners are greedy. I'm a property owner. We own property. A lot of us do. But the people are the most important part of that. And that's why I think that my position would trump any other position. Again, it's homeowners out there. It's this idea of keeping Pacifica Pacifica. Some people work in three jobs to stay in Pacifica. Some people are not taking their medicine because they can't afford to pay for their medicine because they want to pay their rent in Pacifica. Is this what we want to promote? Again, I say it's not because people want to live here and they can't afford to live here, it's because people want to stay here. That's it.
Thank you very much. Noted about the word superior. Mary Ann Nyheart, you're up next. Tell us what approach you disagree with and why your approach to handling the city's problems would be better. How's that?
I don't even know if that's the case. As I said earlier, governing is about choosing, and I appreciate the passion. I've spent my whole entire life helping people. That's what people are about for me. I'm a nurse. I'm, you know, people say a lot of things about what individuals are, but if I could change one thing about the practice of government right now, and it's not even one thing, it's going to be two, it's the fact that we have this habit of pigeonholing people. If you make a decision in one regard that has to do with the issues of how a law gets passed, which is way more complicated than you've seen up here, then in fact, it's, you know, it's assumed that you are anti-people, or that you are anti, or that you're a developer, we, whatever. That's never been me. It's never even remotely been me. I've always been an environmentalist. I've always been supportive. I've worked on the alternative fuels plan for the county. I've chaired the water committee for the whole county, trying to work on this issue of how we work together. And the other thing I would change is that when we predetermine our votes, we have a real problem in local community government, because there's five of you. And you have to listen to everything that you take in. Each and every one of you up here doesn't represent a position. You represent instead the whole community. And so it's a matter of like weighing and making choices and hearing everybody. And each of these issues you have heard about requires a public hearing. If I tell you that I'm predetermining my vote before the public hearing, what's the point of the public hearing? I really, really want to stress that we have a housing crisis, and there are multiple ways to attack how we can do that. And we need to choose multiple ways together. But it takes staff resources, it takes time, it takes putting together sound legal laws that allow you to do that. And that's really critical if you're going to attack this problem in a way that protects the whole entire community.
Thank you very much. And before we wrap it up, we're going to ask everybody for their closing statements, and we're going to look into the future just a little bit. We're going to start with you, Bridget. We're going to ask all of our candidates, please give us your closing, okay, please give us your closing statement, but tell us how your vision for Pacifica, how will it be different at the end of your term?
That's a very good question. I just want to say one thing about what was just said. The city has done nothing. The city has done less than, more than nothing. They have actually put a kibosh on any language that includes fair housing. So I want that to be known. Nothing has been done. Nothing. How would it be different? Yes, I think that that's a pertinent question because we are about to go headlong into a whole bunch of development along the coast and continue on turning a blind eye on the people that are having to leave, the working-class people of this community that have to leave this community because of all the influx of big money. And so how would it be different? It'll be drastically different. You will have a completely new, developed downtown coastline with all the problems that are going to come with that. Developing on the coast has been something that I read in the New York Times is not recommended for any cities to do right now. That will happen if there isn't a candidate put on the city council that is not backed by the National Association of Realtors. So I would hope that, I mean, I'll tell you my vision. My vision for Pacifica is that we wouldn't change all that much, that we would emphasize or accentuate our positive things and diminish the negative things. There's stuff that we could do with the money that is, there are resources to work with. And if we looked at the whole thing, including climate change and sea level rise, you could amass a great amount of resources to tackle some of the problems that we're facing. But currently, we're on a trajectory for major development on a coast that is looking at major changes. So it's a drastic decision that Pacifica needs to make. Do we want to stay a small town? Do we want to have an economy that is self-determining? Do we want to develop a green economy that is going to take us into the future? Or do we want to leave a big pile of broken concrete in a flood zone that is still being paid off by our children 30 years from now? I mean, this is a big decision. You know, we have a great deal to work with. We have a beautiful community. The Airbnb phenomena is at our door, waiting for us to get onboard and make revenue from it. Yeah, a lot of rearranging and a little spiffing up. That's what I'm talking about, Pacifica.
Thank you very much. Deidre Martin, you're up. Please give us your closing statement and tell us how Pacifica will be different at the end of your term.
I just want to also say something about predetermined votes. Mary Ann, you had mentioned that, you know, we can't come into this with predetermined. We actually have to have, come to the table with some opinions. We are not incumbents, so we don't have the history that incumbents do. So just kind of want to make that note to everyone out there. I've been to ethics training. I am a commissioner, so I know all about that. We will have to have public hearings on all these things. That aside, I want to say that I am a project manager by trade. I have a good idea of looking at a vision and figuring out how to get there in a step-by-step process, but also making sure that you herd all the cats to get together and talk about all the different things. I'm a good listener, and if I don't know the answers to things, which I won't most of the time, I am very good at seeking and talking and considering and weighing all the options, and I think that's a major part of this. I also, what do I see, how do I see kind of Pacifica maybe being a better place, or where do I see Pacifica in four years? I see Pacifica being a more compassionate city. I see Pacifica having a real coastal plan and being a more connected community and coming together in more open forums and being a part of the process, making sure that every person here feels like they are one entity with the government. I hope you like what you heard tonight. Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you for our campaign. All of the funds that were raised were raised by your neighbors' pockets. I got checks for $20, $30, $40 with notes that said, "I wish I could give you more." I've been promised some funds from the locals, but I haven't received them yet. So all of the mailers, all of the signs, has come from your pockets. And I want to say thank you for our campaign, this community. I wouldn't do this without you. you.
Thank you very much. Mary Ann Nyheart, please give us your closing statement and tell us how Pacifica will be different at the end.
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to apologize, because when I said predetermined votes, I wasn't talking about any of the candidates. I was talking about some things that have happened on council currently. So I am very apologetic if you thought that related to you, because it didn't. And I think you should have opinions. That's not, that's part of the whole process. On the other hand, I am really proud of the work that we've done on council. We were to have been bankrupt several years ago when I started and when others began to work toward systematically addressing our financial situation. At this point in time, we have an incredible staff, probably one of the best staff we've had. We have a double-A credit rating, we have the lowest interest ever, we have a really solid plan with good financial approaches to what's going on for our future, but we have to maintain that. And our community has been very clear that they want to do that by economic growth, not by taxes. So I'm cool with that, that's the choices, that's why we put things on the ballot and we make those choices. But when you do economic growth, you have to make some choices about how you do that and where you do that. I am not inclined to make any big developments. I've heard things about what I support and what I don't support, and it's usually wrong. I like small, dense, transit-oriented kinds of developments that are really associated with commercial and walkability and the kinds of things that we would like to see in a more intimate community. I come from a town of a farm community, and I lived outside of a town at 700. So when I talk about a small community, that's kind of what I'm talking about. And we're 38,000 or so, so I'm not sure we're a small community. We have really big city needs and big city expenses. The bulk of it goes to police and fire. Our public works staff, you worry about roads and streets, it's a very small chunk, and they make do with an amazing work ethic, I think. And so we need to provide them more resources to be able to really do the kind of job that Pacifica deserves. I love this community, I love being here, it's been an honor to serve, and I hope I am able to continue to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Sue, we'd like to find out, we'd like to hear your closing statement and how will Pacifica be different after your term?
I see Pacifica as a destination. We all live here, we all love it. Visitors, we need visitors to come here. This boutique hotel, the walkability of Palmetto, people shopping in the little shops, spending their weekends here and not just driving past and staying on our highways. I see, we are a compassionate town. We do care about everybody here, and I see that continuing to develop for the visitors here, because once people come here, people love it here. And that's why people stay here, because they do love it here. I have worked with so many different groups, I see that there is diversity, I am endorsed by the firefighters, the Labor Council, Jerry Hill, many other of the, sorry, Kevin Mullen, Karen Irvin, a lot of community leaders, as well as outside of the community. And if we use all of those resources together, we can make this even more special than it is now. We really have a special place. We need some economic development, we can't keep relying on the little specs that the Public Works has to fix our roads. We need the economic development to continue to make our town prosper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I would like to just thank very much Bridget Duffy, Deidre Martin, Mary Ann Nyheart, and Sue Vaterlas. Thank you very much. Round of applause, everybody. This has been the City Council Candidates Forum, presented by Pacific Coast TV and the Pacifica Tribune. My name's Dennis Willis, I'd like to remind everybody, I'm sure we all know, but Election Day is November 8th. If you missed any portion of this program, if you're watching it live, you can go to PCT's website at pacificcoast.tv. And once again, a round of applause for our candidates, thank you very much for coming down. And we will see you all on Election Day. Good night, thank you.
Thank you. Great voice.
Thank you.